Don't let them get the money.
We got, we got here early. We're waiting for the official time.
Yeah, we don't want to go to Uber.
Yeah, we started early.
Almost shut down.
It's almost. Count that.
There's a one, there's a one on the podium. All your mics.
We just almost there. Seconds away.
Thank you for being here. If you'll stand, we'll have a word of prayer by Commissioner Melton. You might stand in for our place.
Let's pray. Our most holy God, Father, we lift you up and you praise and thanks this morning for all the blessings you give us, Father David. Father, we would ask that you continue to bless our county and bless our, our nation, Father, and Father, give us discernment this morning to make the best decisions for the citizens of Anzac County. But as you continue to bless our many women who serve in the military, Father, and especially those that are in arms' way, Father. And Father, we just give you thanks again, and we ask this in the most holy name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner Melton. Called a reg, called a session, the regular meeting of Anzac County Commissioners Court on Wednesday, March the thirty first, twenty twenty one, at nine oh one A M. Announced quorum is established with all members of the court present. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with a reading of the minute of the meetings of the Commissioners Court approval same for March the seventeenth, twenty twenty one. Got a motion by Commissioner West.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Is there any discussion or questions or corrections on the minutes? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. Don't move. Got a motion by Commissioner Melton.
Second.
Second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions or discussion about the bills that's been submitted for payment?
I always like to let everyone know. We, we don't just run through this. There's a whole stack here. We've been working on all week. So it doesn't go as fast as it looks like in here.
Do you more comments, questions? Being none, all in favor of approving the county bills for payment as submitted, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted.
Don't move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion about the bills that's being ratified? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. General business, is there any general business we need to be made aware of? Okay, Sheriff. Welcome. I would like to mention that we are going, and there's some brochures or handouts up there on the podium of a COVID nineteen vaccine clinic coming up, April the eighth, at the Farm Bureau building. From nine A M. to four P M., appointment is required. You would need to go on the county website and fill one of those forms out, COVID, save our seniors. But as you know, anyone over sixteen is a, can get the shots now. And so.
And that's Johnson and.
This is the Johnson and Johnson. I know a lot of people in Anzac County said, well, I'm not taking him. Okay, this is the Johnson and Johnson. We, I think we have up to five hundred doses. Last time I heard, there was three hundred and ten had signed up for it. So if you would like to have the Johnson and Johnson COVID nineteen, please go on the website, sign up, and then they'll call you next week, and the military's coming in to do it next week, the fifth, sixth, and seventh. They'll be calling and scheduling your appointment. So once you sign the form on the website, okay, you're, you're signed up. They will call and confirm an appointment time for you on the eighth. Is there any other general business we need to be made aware of? Any announcements or anything?
I'm just wondering on this COVID shot, what, what can we do for, for the elderly that are homebound? Is there some way that we could work with Farm Bureau and military?
Well, I don't believe on this one. This is a walk-in. It's a walk-in. There is discussion. You know, everything's moving pretty fast on the COVID. There's discussion. It, you know, maybe within another month or so, having mobile units. The people for, for homebound to go out into the communities that's not able to go to these walk-ins and, and everything. But there is, there is a progress being made on that to, to go to their homes and, and do the vaccines.
You know, on the COVID, we only had nineteen new cases last week, which is really down from what we've been doing. And only a hundred eight active cases right now in the county, which is real good.
It is good. You know, it's been a, it's been a long year. Been a long year for us, been a long year for you. It's, I don't think this hadn't changed. Every one of us in here has been affected by. And, and we still, we don't have the answers, but we know the one that does have the answers, and we continue to serve him. Any other pub, uh, general business, any announcements needs to be made? Being none, we'll move to item number six, public comments. Scott, did anyone sign up for pops? Okay, no one signed up for public comments. We'll move to item number seven. Discuss and consider Commissioners Court to proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Anzac County. Mr. King, welcome. Thank you for the work you do. You've got a good group. We'll turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you, Commissioners. On behalf of our colleagues at the Child Welfare Board, Children's Advocacy Center, and also Court Appointed Special Advocates, Casa de Texas, and C P I, criminal, excuse me, I almost do that. You're not criminal. You're criminal. Investigations, only child protective investigations. We want to present with you and share with you the opportunity we have in our county to be able to provide this as a, April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. A little bit of history for you. I know some of you are used to hearing Sandy do the speaking here, so we'll try to channel a little bit of that. But in nineteen seventy nine, for encouragement of child help, President Jimmy Carter designated the first National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Four years later, in nineteen eighty-three, President Ronald Reagan formally established April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And every year since then, our nation has come together to bring awareness to the child abuse epidemic. And it truly is an epidemic plaguing the United States of America. This April, an estimated one hundred and fifty children will die due to abuse or neglect in our United States of America. In reality, it's an even greater number. Over sixteen hundred children die each year across the country where nearly four million referrals are made to CPS agencies such as Child Protective Investigations here in our county with concerns of abuse and neglect involving more than six point six million children. Throughout this counting and throughout this month, you will see different symbols to represent and stand for the children who have been victims and are survivors of child abuse. You will notice blue ribbons, and I have these for each of the Commissioners and county officials here with us this morning. In the spring of nineteen eighty-nine, a Virginia grandmother named Bonnie Finley tied a blue ribbon to the antenna of her van after she lost her grandchild to child abuse at the hands of her own daughter. She did that for awareness. The spirit of the blue ribbon grew the following year in nineteen ninety and continues as a national symbol now for child abuse awareness and prevention. In two thousand and eight, Prevent Child Abuse America introduced the pinwheel as a national symbol for child abuse prevention, as a whimsical and childlike notion that what our kids should actually have, a carefree child. So you will see symbols such as this throughout our county. Our county has some unique qualifications for it. As we look back at two thousand and nineteen, as that is pre-COVID and the cleanest numbers for all of us, I think many of us would like to not acknowledge twenty twenty. But in twenty nineteen, Child Protective Investigations did four hundred and sixteen investigations in our county for child abuse. Roughly thirty-three point three investigations per one thousand children in our county. That resulted in a hundred and thirty-two investigations, roughly ten point seven investigations for every one thousand children here in our county. And that also resulted in a hundred and ninety-nine confirmed victims of child abuse. Those hundred and thirty-two confirmed investigations led to a hundred and ninety-nine confirmed investigation of victims. Statistically, nationwide, one in ten children will become a victim of abuse before their eighteenth birthday. If we look at our population of our county, that is approximately fourteen hundred children in our county will become victims of abuse before their eighteenth birthday. Together, we can work to educate and eradicate child abuse in Anzac County while standing up for children to serve them. And so we present with you and, and ask you to consider the proclamation, and I'm, do you want me to share this, read this, or will you read that, Judge?
If you want to read down to where we approve.
Okay, thank you. So the proclamation states this, whereas nearly two hundred, nearly two hundred thousand children in Texas are reported as abused or neglected every year, and whereas child abuse prevention is a community responsibility and finding solution depends on involvement among all people. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs to benefit children and their families. Whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among agencies, as we have seen today. Schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas everyone in the community should become more aware of child abuse prevention and consider helping parents raise their children in a safe nurturing environment. Now therefore, we, the Commissioners Court of Anzac County, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-one to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in Anzac County, Texas, and urge all citizens to work together to help reduce child abuse and neglect significantly in years to come.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution? So, got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Melton. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And I would like to, if you've got your group here, come up and get a picture.
Sure. We have a, the whole back queue.
They can come stand here, share. If y'all would like to stand with, because we're all partnering in this together.
Appreciate that. Do you have a copy of the proclamation?
I do.
Okay.
Do you?
Can you hold it for?
Okay, I'm gonna need this wrote a slide down just a little bit. All right, leave a good everybody now. Count three, one, two, three. Let's do it again. One, two, and three, and one more time. One, two, and three. Thank you.
Did not want our county officials to be left out, so there are pins, ribbons, and bracelets for your use and, and.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks.
May I say just one?
You may.
On behalf of the Child Welfare Board, I, I want to tell you, just give you an update of some things I'm really proud of. Um, in the past, representation on the board has primarily been uh, one ethnicity and in one community primarily. We have now moved to where we have representation of Hispanics. One from every town in our county on our board, which makes our work easier. Uh, I'm really proud because we've worked really hard to have representation. Our bylaws say we're supposed to be geographically representative, ethnically representative, socio-economically represented, and occupationally represented. And so we, we are moving to, the only thing we don't have is an African American, but I have one from Will's Point that I'm working on. Very, she's a retired teacher, and so I'm really proud that we're beginning to be representative across the whole county and occupationally, yeah, everything I've said. I'm really proud of that. So I want you to know we're trying to be more representative.
Thank you for what, thank you for what you guys, I tell you, you know, as a J P and as a sheriff's department, there's stuff that'll pull your heart out. I mean, you see it day in and, and a lot of people in Anzac County get up and go to work every day, and they, they don't see it. But there's stuff going in the, on in these homes and stuff that will absolutely pull at you. And it's a tragedy what our children are having to live through today. And I thank you for your service. Thank you for every day that you get up and you donate your time and energy to, to help these children. Bless you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, man, just say one more thing. It'll do your part good. It'll do your part good. You never know the good that you do in some area, how it will come back to you in another area. I do dog rescue, which do not spread that. But I adopted a dog out to a young man from Missouri who lives in Dallas. And we befriended him and kind of became a family for him because his family's in Missouri. Well, we stay in contact, and I was talking to him in early December, and I was just whining. Uh, because that's the month I go out and try to raise a lot of money, because, you know, it plays in the giving spirit. So I was whining about it. Well, he works for a gentleman in Dallas that has a company. Two weeks later, in the mail, this letter came, and this gentleman that he works for made a fifteen thousand dollar donation to our board. So you never know. That someone in another county cared that much about. It provided basically all, almost all the Christmas presents for our children waiting. Other people are working.
They are, they are. We'll move to item number eight, which will be Mr. King also, I believe.
Yes, historically.
Oh, let me read. Discuss and consider approving the Child Advocacy Center of Anzac County to host a Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Event on April the twenty-third, twenty twenty, on the courthouse grounds.
Thank you, Judge. The Children's Advocacy Center, working again with our colleagues throughout the industry, I hate to use the word industry, but service industry, to serve the children, are asking for the, the approval to have a, a gathering. And we are struggling, so to speak, with, how, how do you paraphrase it or call it? Um, in the past, we've done a candlelight vigil. As we have seen throughout twenty twenty, vigil has a totally different meaning and almost has lost some of its meaning throughout twenty twenty. Uh, with some pandemic vigils and local abuse, violence vigils and things of that sort. And so we really wanted to be able to turn the tide, so to speak, and, and that twenty twenty word that we've all come to love and appreciate is pivot. And so we'd like to pivot, if you will, and have that gathering on April twenty-third at noon, so that we can gather those who could stop at lunchtime and come and stand up for children. And to be able to find out what community resources are out there that they can stand up with and to volunteer with, and what that impact, just like we were hearing earlier, can make a difference in somebody else's life. And so we're just asking for the authorization to be have, able to have that on the east side.
Don't move. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions or discussion for Mr. King? We're just happy to be able to have it this year, you know.
We are too. We are too. And along those lines, we are using the phrase stand up for children, and so I can have these magnets for you as well. They go regularly on your call cabinet, standing, they stick on office desk, sheriff. So, you know, they are available for all of us to remember to stand up for children every day.
Okay. We have a motion second. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Congratulations. And again, thank you for what you do. Item number nine, discuss and consider approving the contract between Anzac County Appraisal District to include Misty Stanberry as the new tax assessor collector, our chief, our head appraiser, Scott Hyde. He's here. You may proceed.
Thank you for allowing us to be here this morning. I want to point out that this is not a new contract. The appraisal district has a long-standing relationship with county and collecting property taxes. But anytime we have a new tax assessor come in or a new chief appraiser, part of best practice is say that we need to review and, and and just make sure we make the updates the relevant needed. Stanberry and I have reviewed the appraisal district's current contract. We looked at that a couple of years ago, so most everything in there was pretty current and up to date. Uh, we're not recommending any substantive changes today, but we are recommending we update to reflect uh, Misty Stanberry as our new tax assessor collector. It not only takes the assent of the county commissioners, but our office as well. Uh, so we want to make sure we have all approvals in place. I know the big question everybody asks is, does this cost any extra money? And no, this makes no, no changes to the funding. Uh, we're still doing what we always done and, and keep our, our costs in check, but we're recommending that for approval today to reflect Misty Stanberry as our new tax assessor collector.
Okay. Any questions for Scott? Okay, got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner LaPrada to approve the new contract, which just basically changes the name on the contract, correct, to Misty Stanberry. Okay. They got a motion second. Any questions or discussion?
You see, you have anything to say?
Well, um, I guess it'd be kind of considered general business, and recently, we attempted to open the Bull's Point Substation as far as what's going on with my office, and everybody kind of aware there was some winter storm damage, so as soon as that is complete, it will be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And great, in lieu of that, got Grand Celine Substation open. It said days are Monday and Tuesday. And we'll be looking in Ben Wheeler in the future, but that's where I'm at right now. And I'm just here, I did get to attend the meeting last week at the appraisal district. That was interesting. I actually had quite a few questions on how the land tax part, you know, goes, and so. And I think Commissioner LaPrada was there in attendance too, so it was an interesting meeting, and I'm so excited to be here.
Well, we're excited to have you here.
Yeah, thank you.
And everything, and you, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
That's sick. We have motions, I got that discussion. Any other questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you guys for being here.
Thank you very much.
Item number ten, discuss and consider authorizing the sale of fireworks for San Jacinto day from April the sixteenth through midnight, April the twenty-first. Uh, you know, they've added a bunch more firework dates that can be, they can sell, but didn't know you, what, what the pleasure of the court was.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner LaPrada to authorize the sale of fireworks for San Jacinto day. Uh, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion?
Uh, I've got a question.
Okay.
I know that every year that each of these fireworks stands has to be inspected before it's open. Sam doing that, or do you know?
Yeah, yeah, and we don't have a fire marshal.
That's their responsibility, the way I understand it.
They can call the state to get. My understanding is they can call the state to come in and, is, is that your understanding?
That's my understanding, or they can pay an individual that's qualified to do that inspection. But that, that facility is supposed to be inspected, and it's their responsibility to do that.
Any other questions, discussion? Great. Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eleven, discuss and consider new appointments to the Historical Commission. I believe, Mr. West.
We're going to table that, at least that's my motion to table.
Okay.
We have some individuals who we've been talking with, but we're trying to get it where our numbers in the board are representative of each of the four precincts. Right now, we're not really.
Okay, so your motion is to table item number eleven, appoint new performance assessor. Got a second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor of tabling item number eleven, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twelve, discuss and consider employee longevity program. Believe our assistant H R, Chloe's going present.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is my proposal to bring back the longevity program. The last time we had any kind of program like this, it was in two thousand and eight, and I've been working really hard these past couple of weeks trying to get everything organized and see how we can get this program up and going again. Um, me and Dan figured out we can budget five hundred dollars for, to get this program up, and we think we'll, we'll spend every dollar of that five hundred trying to catch up twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one of the employees. Um, with this money, I have designed years of service certificates, and I also have, I'm bringing back the pins that were given out in two thousand and eight also. So I actually have some samples for y'all. So while y'all look at those, I will organize everything. It's my plan to make the certificates and design them, prepare them for each employee, for their supervisor, order all the pins, get everything prepared, get all the signatures for them. Um, my goal is to do all of that so I can just give them to the supervisor, and y'all can give them out however y'all want. I've heard people want to do lunches and Commissioners Court, so it's up to the supervisor. But, um, yeah, this, please take some time to consider, and if y'all have any questions, I'd love to answer them. I just think it's really important to appreciate the employees of their years of service.
If you remember, in two thousand and eight, we had a, I don't know what was it, that, so it'd been a Catholic church. And Judge Coates passed out the pins of, for years of service. of service. Back then, it goes in five-year increments, and back then, I had been here nine years, so I got a five-year pin. And I thought, well, next year I'll get my ten-year pin, and there has never been a next year.
I've got a tenure here, I'll say you.
So, I mean, and I think you're, you're asking for permission to, uh, move forward with this program. Uh, the, if you look behind, you have an invoice in the package you handed out.
Yeah, I like that. You changed that diamond stone to a crystal stone.
But, uh, I think Chloe's asking for permission to move forward with this. Uh, you, I think each department head would receive a certificate for their employees plus a pin to match. Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner LaPrada. Is there, to proceed and then grant approval? Is there a second?
Seven.
Uh, sec, uh, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion for Chloe? She can answer them all. Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Congratulations. He was proud of the. Thank you. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider setting the speed limit on Van Zet County Road twenty-five oh one at thirty-five miles per hour. And I never know if that's Keith's or.
Well, we got interme.
That's right.
I wish Keith had some of mine.
We're going to discuss that.
Uh, I received a petition from the, uh, individuals that live on twenty-five oh one to set the speed limit to thirty-five miles an hour. So, uh, considering, I recommend that we set speed limit to thirty-five. Make a motion to set speed limit to thirty-five miles.
Not seconded.
Motion made by Commissioner Milton, uh, to set the speed limit on third, on Van Zet County Road twenty-five oh one at thirty-five miles per hour, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider donation towards repairs on Van Zet County Road thirty-four twenty-four, uh, from Judy, uh, Miss and Johnny Willis.
Johnny Willis, yes, sir. That's a, we did some major repairs on that road, uh, twenty-four, thirty-four twenty-four comes off highway just east of, uh, Big Tri, Big Tex Trailers. And after we did that, uh, Ms. Mintz contacted them and said, Burn or some of the neighbors wanted to show their appreciation by making a donation towards those repairs. So this is post-repair, not pre-repair. And, uh, Ms. Mintz, uh, made a donation of twenty-four thousand dollars. And, uh, Mr. Willis made a donation of a thousand dollars. I make a motion that court accepts these donations and, uh, that they're, if they're accept them, there's a, uh, budget amendment, uh, sheet there where it goes back into precinct three, rolling bridge, uh, materials.
Okay.
Let me get back with you.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Pearson to accept the donation. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider approval of twenty twenty-one budget amendments. You have the budget amendments are before you. Got a motion from Commissioner West.
Second.
Second by Commissioner LaPrada. I do have a question on the abatement office, abatement office. Sandy, I believe, I believe that line item is Fire Marshal's line item. We need to do anything. I mean, he has no budget. The abatement officer, when we split that up, that's something we'll have to fix in budget time. I think. Okay, no problem there. Yeah, that's what I. Yeah, that's what, if, if we're going to leave it split, we'll probably need to split that budget out in the next budget process, but it's always been together. That's reason they shared out the same budget as this together, but I just don't want the next Fire Marshal, because I know we're looking for a Fire Marshal, have applications out. Okay. Okay. No problem there. Is there a motion to approve the budget amendments?
So.
Okay, you got it. We have a motion second. Okay. Any other discussion or questions on the budget amendment? Being none, all in favor of approving the budget amendments for twenty twenty-one, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider approval of February twenty twenty-one Financial Investment Report for County Treasurer to be entered into the minutes of Commissioners Court. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? Second, got a second by Commissioner West. Any questions or this discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments of county government and approval entry of same in the court's minutes as matter of record.
Fortunately, we have, uh, three meetings here this month, and, uh, we had only one missing the last period, and, and, uh, we have all, all of our reports in.
Great. Does that have a motion to approve the monthly reports?
It is.
You have a motion by Commissioner West to approve the monthly reports submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion on the reports that were submitted? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Is there a motion to adjourn? So we got a motion by Commissioner Milton, second by Commissioner West. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.